Go ahead and call and spin into order for January fourteenth. Can you stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the nation the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in Welcome, everybody. Hope you're enjoying the nice warm January that we've had without snow. Okay, so, looking for an approval of the agenda, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We have no presentations tonight. Next item on the docket is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizens or requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. On tonight's consent agenda, we have city council minutes for December tenth, 2018, city council minutes for January second, 2019, resolution approving dispersment through January fourteenth, 2019, with a sewer community center bingo permit. Going to get a motion to go ahead and approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next item on the docket is public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting, on this sheet provided, and identify themselves by providing a name and address. And, of course, we have our rules under up here in regards to our public comment for everybody. The only person that we have that's going to be addressing something that is not on the agenda is Mr. Dave Scheiber. So, Mr. Scheiber, if you'd like to come to the dais, please. Tell us who you are and what you want to go ahead and mention here to... What you want to mention into the city council, and please speak into the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hegg. My name is Dave Scheiber. I'm a resident for Lee Sore for fifty-five years. I'm also disabled. I have numerous matters within the city I would like to have spoken about or communicated about, but I feel through the five minutes, there's no way possible. I'm requesting a meeting with the appropriate parties, which will be decided by Mayor Mr. Hegg, so I can communicate my matters. On another note, I wish to share, I was to Governor Wallace's ball Friday night. It says "One Minnesota." I want to know, is it one Lee Sore? Because I feel I don't see that. Another matter was shift pages here. I have an idea for some drainage tower. It is a very good idea, but I will not share it unless I get the respect I deserve. There's been matters in the past when I shared ideas with the city, and the city took credit, and Dave didn't even get a thank you. I think that's very rude. Speaking of rudeness, I think Lee Sore, there's a lot of rude people these days, and I don't feel rudeness is appropriate, and I feel Lee Sore is a special place. But my days here are getting really short because I'm tired of the way Lee Sore has... I feel some of you who were elected indicated you were going to do changes. I'm sorry, but I do not see that. Mr. Kirby, I would like to welcome you as a new member. I have known you for around thirty years. I vividly recall the very first day I met you. It was at Bragdi Loops D.D. Sales. I'm in had to do with your wife's dental. Do you recall that?
I do, yeah. Long time ago, Dave. It's been a long, long time ago.
Yeah, unfortunately, I still, Lee Sore was a lot better town than... I have circulated some paperwork amongst you. I've tried to form a group. The name of the group will be called Concerned Citizens for a Better Lee Sore. I will lead this group. I will be the voice for that group, and I will relay the thoughts to you people from the council, the mayor, Mr. Hegg, as well as city administrator, Mr. Krueger. I guess that pretty much sums it up. If you will, people may notice I show a little bit of emotionism. That's because I'm very saddened by Lee Sore. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scheiber, for taking the time to address city council, and you have been heard. Myself and City Administrator Krueger want to get together here very soon and set a meeting with you. Fair enough.
Thank you, Mayor Mr. Hegg.
Yes, sir. Okay. We now move into the first item, our public hearing for small cities development grant application. No public hearing, no?
Yeah. Mayor Hegg, members of the city council, requesting that we move this to a regular agenda item. I was mistakenly put on as a public hearing. The public hearing is actually going to be held on the twenty-eighth. That should hit the paper, I believe, this week. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. McCall, who is facilitating this grant application. The city of Lee Sore is acting, I believe, as the fiscal agent. So, there's a bunch of various steps that Ms. McCall and city staff are working on. So, with that, I'll turn it over.
Before you address us, Ms. McCall, everybody, please make note that item seven alpha will be now known as eight alpha, the small cities development grant application. Everything else will be eight bravo through eight echo, which were initially eight alpha through eight delta. Okay, Ms. McCall?
All right. Thank you so much. I don't know if this is on, but that's okay. I'm just here tonight representing the housing authority in the process of applying for the deed small cities grant. I'm not sure if all of you received email. Mayor Hegg received notification a couple of weeks ago that the preliminary application that I authored did actually go in and was considered competitive. Of the fifty-two applications, twenty-two of those were filed to be competitive and can move forward in the application process for the final small cities application. I did speak with Chelsea and others at Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, and our board, the HRA board, has engaged their services to actually draft the final copy of the grants on behalf of the HRA. They have a great working relationship with deed, and they're well-known in the process, so I am very confident Chelsea will do a great job. She will be present on the twenty-eighth to answer any specific questions regarding the process, but tonight's action that's before you is just going to be the adoption of the citizen participation plan, which I believe was included in your council packet. The citizen participation plan, the goal and purpose of that program basically charges the city council with holding two public hearings throughout the process, one of which will be held on the twenty-eighth pre-application. The final application is due the twenty-eighth of February, so at your next meeting, you will hold that first public hearing. The second public hearing... The second public hearing... Oh, yeah, that's different. The second public hearing will be held midway through the project completion or the project implementation, if we're awarded the funds. The total grant application through deed that I've applied for is six hundred thousand, which is the max allowed for a single project. The city has been a participant in past years of deed funds for various rehab projects. I don't know much about that program, but that was awarded quite a bit more money because it could affect multiple properties. The citizen participation plan was provided to in your packet, and that is a kind of a form that deed recommends, and I'm just here to answer any questions you might have about the citizen participation plan or what you're charged with doing this evening.
Ms. McCall, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and perhaps just for the benefit of everybody here, both on council and also in the audience, tell us a little bit about what the six hundred thousand dollar grant request is and what the money's going to be used for.
Absolutely. So, the HRA's primary function in the city of Lee Sore is to operate the Hillside Court Apartments. The apartments were built in nineteen sixty-nine with exterior cantilevered walkways on the exterior of the building by just way of natural deterioration and use of chemicals to, you know, handle the Minnesota weather. It is looking like we need to approach replacement of those walkways, and the engineer that we have staffed to work with us on this project actually is recommending complete removal and replacement, and it would not be the same design necessarily as what's in place currently. It'll still be exterior walkways like you, you know, see when you pass the building, but it's going to be its own structure with columns and kind of a standalone structure up against the existing building. The total project cost at this point estimated is about one point five million. That includes relocation of all the tenants for a duration of about four months for project completion. The tenants have all been made aware of this decision. Our vacancies are not being backfilled at this time. They're taken offline with our HUD system so that we're not penalized for our subsidies. And so far, the tenants understand the importance of the safety of this, you know, project. We did engage a company out of the Twin Cities to, excuse me, offer us some guidance on shoring up the existing walkways so that they're safe in the interim where we can secure funding, and that was installed, I believe, mid-November. The balance of the application or the balance of the project would hopefully come from a funding mechanism through Minnesota Housing, which is another department of the state. They set aside public funds specifically for public housing. It's called POP funding, and that application was submitted mid-December, and we won't know on the actual finalization of whether we're awarded those funds until April of 2019.
Members of city council, any questions from Ms. McCall regarding the citizen participation plan or anything associated with anything about the resolution that we're about to make a motion on?
How many tenants are up there in...
Currently, we have eleven vacant units. Capacity is forty-eight units. And our family size right now is generally one, except we have one unit that has three in it right now.
And has a pretty good plan to relocate everybody here in this renovation?
Yep. I'm working on relocation plan at this time.
And they'll all be relocated right here in this community?
Not necessarily. We just don't have the ability to do that. They'll be given two options. Quite honestly, what they'll be given is an option to stay with family or friends, in which case, we, the housing authority, with grant funds and capital funds, would have to pay them a daily stipend to cover the cost of living in their new, you know, in their new home, temporary home. And the other option is to reach out to other housing authorities. That would be HUD's main request of us, that we try to use other public housing facilities. Lee Sore County is limited with public housing units. We have a lot of section eight in Lee Sore County, but public housing would be strictly just Montgomery, the new facility after they rebuilt after it burned a few years ago. There's units over there, but unless there's natural attrition where that, you know, we see some vacancies in those units, they're likely going to be rehomed in hotels in the area.
In the length of the time?
Four months. Yeah. HUD's expectation is that we provide them the ability to prepare, you know, prepare a meal in a microwave and somewhere to refrigerate food, and, you know, that is the expectation, and all the tenants have been explained that. If they are in an alternative housing that we are covering the cost for, they'll still receive a daily stipend. It will be just a lesser dollar amount.
I do have a question.
You have another problem?
Monica, it appears that the main piece of the participation plan is the hearing that we withhold, but there might be additional solicitation of information from residents. Is that the way I read this?
Yes, and the plan itself is just basically to draw on members of the public. I do ongoing, you know, education meetings with my tenants quite frequently, actually, and, you know, if they want a copy of the actual deed application, there is going to be one available with staff upstairs, and I have one in my office as well.
Again, though, the information to be obtained after the hearing, if there need... It says it can be, it doesn't have to be. Who would do that? Would you be collecting that, or would staff be doing that here? How would you do that?
I'm not following your question, like...
I'm in the third paragraph under public hearing.
Okay.
And it reads, "As circumstances warrant and the applicant determines necessary or appropriate, participation may additionally be specifically solicited from persons of low and moderate income, including those benefited, et cetera." My question is, who would do that?
Okay. So, the solicitation comes in the form of putting them on notice about the public hearing? So, each tenant in my building will get the same notice that's being published in the paper. I'll put a notice in each door of each apartment. The notice will be published in the paper two weeks, and it'll be posted at the post office, the library upstairs, in my common areas at my building. I think that's to get to the bulk of your question. And then, the full application that I submitted to deed as the pre-application, a copy's been provided to Kari upstairs, and the public has the right to come in and view that information, as well as preliminary information that Chelsea with Southwest Minnesota has put together.
It does sound like you're the point person for this, as opposed to a staff member in the city?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and Samantha DiMaggio too is working quite well with me, so...
I'm just trying to think how it works, that's my question.
Yep.
And if I may, I'd like to make a correction to Councilmember Kirby's question regarding the number of vacancies you have. Right now, it's eleven, but prior to setting all this up, I think you only had just a couple of vacancies, so you've already started to not fill those rooms in anticipation of this project getting approved?
Correct. Yep, and HUD's been made aware of that. That's their recommendation. Just because the cost to relocate right now, I'm estimating at, if we were at full capacity or full, you know, with all rooms filled, we would be at about three hundred thousand dollars for relocating people for that four months. So, their thought process is the money that we can gain, you know, through rent collection is much, going to be much less than it would cost, and really, to inconvenience these families is going to be difficult, so...
Any other questions from Ms. McCall? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of the citizen participation plan and to adopt resolution, O B O, twenty nineteen dash zero two.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. We now move on to line item eight alpha, or I'm sorry, eight bravo, which is the airport taxi lane extension project engineering services contract, city administrator approval.
Mayor Hegg, members of city council, you have one person that would like to comment. What we'll do is we'll present what this item is, get some information out there, then the individual can come up and make a comment, and then if there's questions that you want staff to answer based on those comments, we can definitely attempt to do that. So, what you have before you is a taxi lane extension project. This is included in the ten-year capital improvement plan for the airport, for the Lee Sore Airport. It's something that we have to file with the FAA. We have Silas here tonight, and he will get into the details of it, but just some basics. A project like this is funded ninety percent through our FAA grants, five percent from MINDOT, and then five percent from the city. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Silas.
Mr. Palmer, welcome.
Yeah, thanks for attending your council. So, as Jasper mentioned, the project that you see on here is the expansion of two taxi lanes to the east to allow additionally the private or public hangar development at the airport. I'm not sure if any of you have been out there to the airport recently, but you'll notice that there aren't any vacant lots available for a member of the public to come in and rent. The existing lots that you see out there that are vacant are currently being leased by other prospective hangar owners. So, how this project arose was the airport manager, Mr. Semensky, mentioned we should look to expand the taxi lane network there to potentially increase some rent revenue for the city, but also to allow for construction of a future public T-hanger, which would attract, you know, potentially eight new aircraft over to the airport, increase fuel sales, and at the end of the day, you know, it just increases revenue for the city. So, what the project would do is expand two taxi lanes kind of to the east, which would facilitate either construction of a T-hanger in the center between them, or also private hangars, which prospective hangar owners could come and build as they see fit. A question that Mr. Krueger asked me earlier today was whether or not this project would include any utilities, and it would not include any utility extensions at this time. Commonplace for Lee Sore is if it's a private hangar coming in, the private hangar owner is responsible for bringing utilities into the hangar. If a public hangar is constructed, then the utilities would be included as part of the project, which is funded either by the FAA or MINDOT. And then, last thing I'll touch on is funding for this project. So, each year since Lee Sore Airport is part of the federal program of airports, the city receives a hundred and fifty thousand of entitlement funds each year, which can be attributed to a project that develops the airport at a ninety percent rate on the FAA side, and normally, it's a ten percent local rate, but the MINDOT Department of Aeronautics has recently been matching half of that share, so they've been providing five percent funding for airport improvement projects, thus lowering the city's share to five percent. So, our total estimated cost for this project for design, construction, and engineering is three hundred thousand, so the local share would be fifteen thousand for construction of those taxi lanes to the east. And with that, I know it's kind of a brief overview, I'm more than happy to answer any questions members of council may have.
I have a question, if I may.
Let me talk to this.
We happened to be in some meeting, one meeting last year, I remember. There's also the possibility of commercial development in one of those hangars, right? We could have the possibility of an aircraft repair facility or something like that that would want to be able to lease and build a hangar. Is that correct?
That is correct. Private lots are available for any sort of business to come in, whether it be a service, a mechanic, you know, restoration. You know, as you can see on the layout there, there's a number of fifty by fifty hangar lots, but there's also, it doesn't mean it has to be fifty by fifty. Someone said they wanted, you know, be a hundred by fifty, you know. The options are abound once the taxi lanes are constructed, just to provide access.
Mr. Palmer, it says here that we're looking at task one and task two totaling forty-eight thousand and nine hundred eighty-five dollars. You just mentioned three hundred thousand. Could you explain what the differences are?
Yeah, so the engineering services, there's task one, which is for the design services, which is essentially twenty-seven thousand, and that's to complete the design, the survey, and get, put a bid package together and solicit bids. Thereafter, there's construction observation, which both of them, Hegg, will be providing. Considering the nature of the project, it would be full-time observation. We'd have part-time observers monitor the project, you know, two to three times a week. And then, our estimated construction cost is a little over two hundred and fifty thousand, so that's why total project cost is estimated at three hundred, but the engineering services of that is just under forty-nine.
Say it, Mr. Krueger.
Silas, if you could talk a little bit about timing with this and kind of, I guess, the grant program that we've enrolled in for getting hangars constructed. I think we're on a waiting list to do that, and we're kind of trying to queue up the ability to tap into those funds by prepping these taxi lanes. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, sure. So, kind of what really drove this project was the city's interest in constructing a public T-hanger for the project. So, the funding mechanism for constructing a public T-hanger would come from MINDOT solely, and what they would provide is a site preparation grant, which would get you the associated apron pavements, the hangar footings foundation, and the floor slab. The city can receive a state grant funded at seventy percent state, thirty percent local, but then the actual erection of the T-hanger building itself would be via the hangar loan program that the state offers. Now, how the hangar loan program works is that the state will provide the city an interest-free loan for twenty years on eighty percent of the cost of erecting the hangar facility itself. That way, you know, the city can kind of try to cash flow their loan payments with rent revenue, knowing that, you know, a hangar project could cost upwards of a million dollars, which is tough to come by if the local share's a hundred percent. So, that's where the state provides some additional funding options that the city can capitalize on. Now, the waiting list for the hangar loan program is quite long, but that, as Councilman McCrobin mentioned, there was a meeting last year with the City of Minnesota where the city had requested to be added onto that list. So, that's why this project is kind of taking place, utilizing the federal funding that's available, with the hope that the state will inform the city that the loan program is available if the city desire to construct the public T-hanger.
Any other questions from anybody from city council? Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
Save your time. Okay. Go ahead and accept the motion then. On, so we have Vaughn Lovely. He'd like to go ahead and talk about the airport expansion. Mr. Lovely.
Thank you, Mayor Hegg, members of the council. My name is Vaughn Lovely. I own Hangar Twenty-Five. I also represent the organization that puts on the annual fly-in the first weekend in June. Maybe some of you are familiar with it, maybe most aren't, but we have a gathering the first weekend of every June. Has great turnout, but people come from the states of California, Washington, Illinois, all over the country to attend the event. The reason I'm here today is I've been appointed to speak on behalf of a group consisting of myself, my father Forrest Lovely, who owns Hangar Four, Twenty-Three, and Twenty-Four, Frank Weber, who owns Hangar Five and Eleven, Jeff Parker, who owns Hangar Nineteen, Jim and Jerry Magus, who own Hangar Ten, Barb Frost, who owns Hangar Number Eight, Brad Bernstein, who owns Hangar Number Six, and Chuck Doyle and Tim Verhoeven, lessees of spots twenty and twenty-one. So, a good solid chunk of the airport right there. I first want to be clear in my statements here that every single one of us is in favor for eventual airport expansion and hangar expansion. Over the course of time, more people and more airplanes. We're all about it. The more airplanes and airplane people, the more viable and credible we are to the community. Additionally, historically speaking, most airplanes come to a general consensus amongst ourselves as to what is best for a particular airport year-round. In short, we talk. As your current everyday customer base, we all feel that there are much more pressing needs for improving the airport before the proposed hangar expansion project. The fact is, since Hangar Number Twenty-Three that my father Forrest currently owns was built in two thousand and four, there have been exactly three hangars total erected: Hangar Twenty-Four in two thousand and fourteen, again by my father Forrest, Jeff Parker's Hangar, Hangar Nineteen in two thousand and eleven, and my Hangar in Twenty, Hangar Twenty-Five, which ground was broken for in two thousand and fifteen. The bottom line is, you actually have two spots available for lease right now, Twenty-Six and I believe Twenty-Nine. You also have two potential hangar spots on the southeast end of the airport with current infrastructure in place, where I know plans are in the works for them being torn down or the lease is not renewed. So, that's four hangar, open hangar locations. If we keep the current construction rate, there will still be an available location for lease in the year two thousand and thirty-four. On top of that, as unfortunate as it is, there are eight hangars on the airport currently owned by people that are seventy years and older. Most of those hangars are most likely going to be available at some point during that timeframe, because unfortunately, some of these people will no longer be with us or out of flying completely. The fact is, the airport has done, done and changed nothing to create the necessary demand to bring new permanent residents in recent years. Your new construction typical hangar owner in two thousand and nineteen wants water and sewer, not having to walk through below-zero temperatures and snowdrifts to use facilities. You're currently asking your customer base and potential new builders you're selling the Lee Sore Airport story to, to have to walk upwards of a quarter of a mile or more to use bathroom facilities, or wash their hands, or even more importantly, for... to use bathroom facilities, or wash their hands, or even more importantly, for proper aircraft operations, to clean their airplane. Because I can tell you, as a person who restores and works on their own airplanes and does their own maintenance, A number one on that list is cleaning your airplane first before you work on it. Where was I at? There are very few people and almost zero fixed base operators who will spend upwards of a hundred thousand dollars or more in liquidity, because it's almost impossible to get a bank loan for a building on leased land for new construction on a hangar with no onsite facilities available in said building, i.e. no utilities. We believe that if the water and sewer needs are addressed first, the more likely you are to attract more tenants and fixed base operation. Ask yourselves this: Currently, you can't get your own airport manager to base his aircraft operations out of La Sourd instead of Vancada, which is literally the next airport over. If you can't get that, who can you get without offering something more to the builder or tenant than you do now? Secondly, you have a current runway incursion problem. If the city plans on building T-hangers in the expansion area and renting their space, if that's your corresponding answer to my statement that I just read to you, then you're only compounding the problem with no full-length taxiway for the runway or alternate taxi area. Without it, encourage, incursions at La Sourd are more commonplace than you would think or hope. If you expand the amount of hangars, which in turn will expand the amount of local traffic, then you are creating a further safety hazard with the even higher likelihood of runway or airplane incursions. In two thousand and nineteen speak, increasing the number of tenants and airplanes and not having a full-length taxiway or marked alternative taxi area will greatly increase the chance for incident and greatly increases the city's exposure to liability. The bottom line is spending, as, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but spending almost three hundred thousand dollars in the end, no matter where it comes from, of taxpayer dollars, on surveying, quality control, and construction, and the potential, just for the potential of more hangars that are not in demand right now, is in our opinion beyond irresponsible and bureaucracy wakes at its worst. As a person who literally grew up on an airport, literally lives on one now, and is a lifelong attendee and subsequent hangar owner at La Sourd, and a hangar owner additionally at two more airports, I believe my opinion is credible. And in my credible opinion, and the opinion of a lot of your other customers that this airport has, it has much more pressing needs. Sewer and water capabilities are one. Extension of the taxiway, which is part of the current airport layout plan, or changing the layout plan to mark the usable grass area on the southwest side of Runway One-Three to use as a taxiway would be, would be a much more inexpensive option. That's, that's the second option to use the funds for. Another one is, the airport desperately needs a fuel cabinet or gas shack to shield the pumps from the elements of weather and everyday wear and tear. It's a problem that continues to persist and has existed for years now. All three of those things are much higher on the necessities list for that airport currently. If you get to those much more pressing needs and if you get them addressed, then by all means, let's talk hangar quantity expansion. I guess that pretty much concludes my statement here, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. So, we're in a situation now, council, that we're looking at either making a recommendation to approve Task One and Task Two totaling forty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars, or based off what we just heard in regards to Mr. Lovely, we've got something to maybe consider, perhaps we can get some additional information, and maybe table at the total time where we can have more information to make a more educated decision. I'll entertain whatever you guys would like to go ahead and suggest. Councilmember Sullivan.
I think at this time, in my opinion, I think we should table it, until we can see where we're at with some of these other three items, especially that we just heard about tonight, maybe just, maybe there's things in the, in the works already, I don't, I don't know what that means, sir.
I mean, I can, I can chime in. This is a staff recommendation based on our, our airport manager, our consulting group. We are cuing this up for a future grant application for the T-hangers, so that's why this has been moved up. Some of those items I can speak to, maybe at the retreat on Saturday, and talk about that. Well, you know, it's, it's one thing if you do want, if you do want specific information, you know, make sure it's very clear what you want, so I can do some research. I'm not exactly sure what that would be at the moment.
I do have a question, Councilmember Krueger. Silas, if you would please address this. Are we, is this a particular type of funding that may be lost if we don't get to it soon?
No, it would not. The entitlement funds that I mentioned, they come from the FAA. They have a four-year shelf life, so you can essentially use funds from two thousand and sixteen for this project, which La Sourd does not have. Those were used as part of a runway maintenance project, so you're not in jeopardy of losing any federal funding by not proceeding with the project at this immediate time.
What about the state, though, with the T-hanger or whatever it was, the possibility of pretty large infusion of funds from the state?
That's correct.
Seventy percent, thirty percent.
The unfortunate part there is there's no definite yes, that the state will be able to provide the loan to the city of La Sourd. That's the difficult position that, you know, you guys are put into, that you obviously know that if the state said yes tomorrow, it may change your decision here on constructing the taxi lanes, but, you know, I can't offer you any, you know, substantial date that by this time, you know, the state's gonna say, yes, we have funds available in their loan program to construct the T-hanger. That's the unfortunate part.
So, you have those great approval.
If I could, Silas, so a couple of the projects that Mr. Lovely mentioned, like the taxiway extension, or I believe that's a little taxiway extension project, is that on our capital improvement plan, our tenure plan?
It's on your capital improvement program, it is on the CIP. However, the FAA's position is they will not support construction of parallel taxiways on runways that aren't four thousand feet of length. La Sourd Runway Thirteen Thirty-One is not four thousand feet of length. There is a runway extension that's shown on the airport layout plan, however, with the current FAA policies, in order to get a runway extension, it would require relocation of the county road to get out of what's called the runway protection zone. And in conversations we've had with the FAA, it's extremely costly to extend the runway, and there aren't the operations currently at the airport to even justify it, so that's why there hasn't been any discussion about constructing a parallel taxiway.
Talking about the enclosure on the fuel, is that something that, I don't think it's an FAA grant, but that it's something that MINDAT we could apply for, something?
Yeah, that's definitely something. If you, if you know what the approximate cost is, that's something we can surely add to the capital improvement program. I'm not sure how many members of council here are familiar with the capital improvement program, but it's essentially, you know, we work with the city administrator, figure out which projects that you want to complete at the airport. We upload that information on the MINDAT's website, and from there, they determine, you know, sometime in May or June, before their fiscal year two thousand and twenty begins, July first, which projects they set aside funding for, so cities can plan for that. But yes, those are projects that we could apply state funding for, which would be seventy percent state, thirty percent local.
So, yeah, so I just want to be clear, the major project, the parallel taxiway, is something that we can't apply for. We can't get federal funds. If you want to do that, we would need to have basically, correct me if I'm wrong, a hundred percent city dollars to do that on our current length of our runway.
We would, we would have tried to get state funds if the city desired, but their funding is limited, and they may look at it as that, that should be a project that the FAA should cover, since it's a airport that's sponsored by federal funds, so I'm not sure if they'd be willing to provide funding for that if the FAA isn't.
Mr. Lovely, I wonder if it'd be possible for you to go ahead and give us a copy of the presentation that you had, so that we could go ahead and take it in consideration. We have a retreat coming up this Saturday, and your airport is one of the items that's on the agenda. I think it'd be very beneficial for all of us on City Council to have the opportunity to go ahead and look that over between now and then.
Can I address the council quick?
Please do.
If, if I can get some contact information, I'd be happy to send it to you, the email.
Just send it to our city administrator.
That'll work too. One quick follow-up, because I have a question on, on the water and sewer part of my discussion, which, which in terms of the, the group of constituents I was, I was speaking on is the A number one part of the whole deal. Is that, is that something that can, is, is part of the capital improvement stuff that where you get federal grant money? None of, none of that is included in it in any way, shape, or form?
I, I don't know, I'd have to ask for Silas if that would be a reimbursable item that we could have in the project. If, if so, I mean, we could look at it, you know, and add it to the project, but that would be a substantial cost, and I don't know if we'd have enough federal grant dollars in our, basically in our pot to do that, because as you can imagine, I don't know where we would pull that from, we'd have to do a lot more investigation. So, I don't, I don't even know if they're reimbursable, so Silas?
That would be something that the residents of the airport would be very interested in knowing, is that, that's a much more pressing need. Like I said in my presentation, you know, there's not a supply issue, in our opinion, at the airport now, and like I said, new construction, people who were building hangars in two thousand and nineteen, water is concerned, is considered a necessity, not, not a luxury. And you're just, in our opinion, you just have zero chance at getting fixed base operation on the airport without those two things. So, that's our opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to offer?
I got a real quick question. I don't understand how the whole airport thing all works out all the time. Mr. Lovely, are you part of the Airport Commission, or are you speaking on behalf?
Speaking on behalf of the group of, the list that I read you, yes.
I understand. Is, have we got a, an opinion or appraisal from our Airport Commission on what, what their recommendations are on this?
We, we don't. So, currently, we have one member that is currently has a term. We're gonna be talking about the Airport Commission and how we're gonna move forward at the retreat on Saturday. We went through kind of a solicitation process for applications. When we appointed people at the beginning of the year, we were soliciting for three months or so, and we didn't get any applications for the Airport Commission. So, technically, there's only one person that has an active term. Now, basically, your term extends as long as you're, you're not reappointed, somebody's not reappointed in your position. We've had some trouble getting the, the Airport Commission to meet. Councilmember McCrobin is on that board, he can attest to that, as the council liaison. So, we've had some troubles. This would be something that we could go to the Airport Commission in the, in the future for, but we just don't have a, a well-organized group yet.
Just out of curiosity, show of hand, how many people are here that have anything to do with the airport? Anybody know that we have an opportunity to go ahead and put an application in for the Airport Commission?
None.
How many are you volunteering to go ahead and join the Airport Commission?
Do you have to live in the city? Do you have to live in the city?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Just throwing it out there.
Yep, nope.
Anybody live in the city? Looking for volunteers. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, have we go ahead and table this till the meeting up to the January twenty-eighth, and have an opportunity to go ahead and discuss this at a retreat on Saturday, the nineteenth. In the meantime, Mr. Lovely will provide, Mr. Krueger with all the information that he presented tonight, give us an opportunity to digest this, then we can get back together with the members of the Board of Admins, try to figure out which way we go. And most likely, we'll probably need to go ahead and pick your brains along the way too, on which of these items we can, what we can, what type of funding's available from federal, state, and local levels, all that type of information.
Mr. Mayor, do you believe that the twenty-eighth is a little bit aggressive? I'm thinking it might be.
I'm sure it's aggressive.
Could we put it off till the first meeting in February?
That would be absolutely fine.
Get sufficient information.
That's fine. I'll go ahead and change my motion from the twenty, or from the twenty-fourth of January to the first meeting in February. Is that a second?
I would second that motion.
Any additional discussion?
I, I still don't necessarily have any questions that I want, that this group wants answered specifically, so if they come to you after this, if, from this meeting on, let me know, otherwise, we'll be presenting the same information at the next meeting. So, if there's things that you want, let me know.
I, I'd have one right away. We haven't voted yet, by the way.
That's correct.
But I would certainly want an overall plan. What are we looking at overall, not just one piece of it, but what about all these different pieces?
I agree with that. We have to know how we can go ahead and satisfy both our citizens that are utilizing the airport, as well as what we can do to take advantage of the various dollars that are available to us.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, let me also say something. Airports are very difficult for small communities. They're expensive, we have substantial funding from outside, which helps us, but if they're done right, they can draw a lot of people. Let me give you an example, the small airport up in Rush City, there's some, because of water and electricity, there's some people that literally have similar to living spaces within that airport hangar system. They, they can be social in those places. They're, they're like little entertainment areas, and people fly in and they, they entertain each other, and it brings commerce to the city. So, I think we need to look at this as an overall plan. I'm not suggesting any of that would happen, I'm just saying it's a big picture thing we need to look at, so.
I definitely understand what you're talking about. I'm familiar with Hackdown in Florida, where they actually have air parks, and they're, they're the real deal. We talked about the water and the sewer, I didn't hear anything about electricity or heat, is that something?
We, we have electricity and gas on the airport right now.
Perfect, okay.
So, you have to motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, any additional discussion? Here in that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We now move on to line item eight Charlie, which is the Colden Funeral and cremation Services request.
Mayor, members of City Council, before you is a, an evaluation of a request that we received from Colden Funeral and cremation services. This request, I just want to make sure it's clear, is that kind of every group that manages cemeteries in La Sourd kind of making this as a collaborative request. I think Colden just provided the letter to do it. So, I just want to be clear, it's not this specific business that's requesting it, but it's a collaboration of the three, three cemeteries that we have in town. So, a little bit of history about this. I believe it states in the letter that this has been done in the past for quite a while. I believe that probably is true. We've, we've recently went through some transitions with Streets and Parks and Streets and Parks' manager. So, there's been some things, the way we've approached this as a council and as a city has changed lately, since I've started. St. Anne's has had some requests in the past to state trees, and the way we've handled it is that we brought it to City Council, because that expends public dollars to do some of these things, you know, not necessarily physical dollars, but time that people are working, and they can work on other areas of their job. So, what we have is a request that we continue to provide snow maintenance and tree maintenance services for the cemeteries in town. Some considerations to have, we have no record, I have no record of City Council authorization of this in the past. You know, I think it was kind of a deal where somebody talked to the Streets and, or the street superintendent, or somebody, city administrator way back when, and just said, yeah, yeah, go ahead and do it. After investigating some things here, apparently in the past, we salted, sanded some church parking lots, things like that. We do provide some salt to the public from our salt shed, that I recently learned about too. So, there's, there's a bunch of kind of loose ends here that, you know, I think it's important and healthy for the council to have a discussion about, just to make sure that staff is, is doing things the way that City Council wants. So, in general, this is a policy decision that, you know, we should talk about. There are some precedents, things that we should also talk about, because, you know, if we're providing this to cemeteries, you know, for the sense that it's for the public, there's potentially some, you know, other churches, schools, businesses in town that might say, hey, you're doing this for them, we should do this for us for these various reasons, which very well could be legit public purpose reasons. So, just keep that in, in mind. And then also, the third thing to keep in mind is just the effect of competition on private businesses. In general, we, my theory is that we don't generally want to compete with other private businesses in town. You know, they're trying to earn a living. If we start competing, then we're kind of, you know, working against ourselves in a sense. So, with that, just the request, the consideration. So, um, with that, uh, just the requests, the considerations, I just wanna have a healthy discussion about it, and hopefully get some, um, input direction from City Council. Uh, I did pass this along to, uh, Legal Council just to talk about it. We do have a couple of references in our City Code about, um, the responsibility of clearing walkways, uh, and parking lots and, and things like that, uh, during a snow event. Um, I don't think there's, I did a, a quick look or a quick search for tree, that tree removals, you know, basically, the way that the trees work are, if it's in the Boulevard, it's the city responsibility, if it's on your property, it's your, your responsibility. So, um, with that, I'll entertain any questions, uh, that you may have. Um, I think I mentioned in the memo that some cities do take care of this, and I don't, I, I, I haven't had the, uh, I haven't looked into if those are agreements that the city's compensating for, or if it's a, a goodwill gesture, or, or something like that, but, um, you know, I think there's enough information here for us to have a good conversation about how we wanna move forward. And if, if that's what we wanna do, we can kind of talk about, um, expectations, um, priorities, things like that. Um, I think typically, what would happen is, um, if there's a snow event, the cemeteries will get cleared after all of the other city priorities were taken care of. So, um, with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have, or, um, yeah, any ideas that you have to move this forward?
I'll go ahead and get it kicked off. I'd like to go ahead and ask this question to start. This, we're talking about snow removal and tree trimming. Somebody's gotta ask, what about, uh, going and trimming? Who's responsible for that? Is that something that's done by the airport, or, I'm sorry, the Cemetery Association? Or how does that all work? Because quite frankly, I don't think none of us really know.
I, I can, Sean might be able to answer, but I had a conversation with Mr. Colden, Daryl Colden, to be clear. Um, the maintenance of grave sites and so forth is all done by the associations. But you're talking here about the entrance and exit roads and the trees that pertain to those, not, they're not tidying up the whole cemetery, from what I understood. It's mainly access egress, if you wanna call it that. Uh, and, and to be clear, the letters, I, forgive me, Daryl, for saying this in a way, it's a little inartful in that it indicates on behalf of, uh, the Colden Services and other funeral services too. Uh, but they really don't benefit necessarily. They, they're often the ones who are called, um, and asked to make sure that people can get access, but this is really on behalf of the cemetery associations, and it does include all of them in town. One of the things that the government would, would be what, what other cemeteries want is, there are only three, and they're all listed. Okay, so Daryl's letter is on behalf. Now, we have to understand, Mr. Colden is on the Board of One, our Councilmember Kirby is on another board, and there's a third one that doesn't have either of those persons on it. If, if Mr. Kirby feels comfortable talking about this, I would certainly want him to. Uh, this is a very touchy situation, and we do provide those services at St. Anne's for certain things that benefit the public. If I could ask the City Administrator to clarify that, my recollection wasn't real clear, but what are we doing, are grass cutting for baseball or something?
So we, we've developed kind of a swap. Um, St. Anne's lets us, or, St. Anne's lets us use their fields, and in return, we mow them, we provide, uh, tortoebiffs, things like that for them. So there's kind of a, a, a swap of services, we get to use the facilities and we maintain them. Um, regarding like the parking lots, there's nothing that we have in effect right now, um, with St. Anne's. We have worked with some of their maintenance people to put them in contact with, um, vendors that have been in town, uh, for doing like crack seal, seal coating, but we haven't, uh, in that situation, I don't think anything's transpired. We wouldn't have that be a piggyback project, we would just have them, uh, do a, a separate contract with a vendor that's in town, with the hopes that they get a, a better deal, because the, the mobilization costs aren't there. So the only thing that we have is, uh, that I'm aware of, is the, uh, the partnership that we have with the baseball fields.
Um, I'd just like to kind of enter a few thoughts. Um, first of all, Jasper, you're right on with all your history that you shared with us about the cemeteries. Um, this kind of puts me in an interesting position, um, being a part of the council, I, I wanna be fair and impartial on this, but yet, I'm an employee of the Colden Funeral, and I, I am indeed on the St. Anne's Cemetery Board. So again, I, I just wanna reiterate, I, I just wanna try to approach this with the, the balance I can, the best balance I possibly can. Um, as far as history goes with St. Anne's, I'm gonna speak to St. Anne's for a moment. The, the help we've gotten from the city as far as snow removal in the past has been very minimal, very minimal. When, when we have a snowstorm and there's no active services or anything going on, they've never usually requested the city to come up and, uh, maintain or plow out the cemetery. Uh, tree, tree trimming, as far as I can remember, I think that's something that's usually been done by patrons of the cemetery, uh, parishioners, and, uh, other volunteers that have helped with that also. So, um, as far as the snow removal goes, I, I, I would like to see that, that, you know, we continue the snow removal with, with St. Anne's, that it's on a very, very low priority, um, it's at an at-need basis, which isn't very often. But as far as the public cemetery goes, uh, Mount Cemetery, um, I think there's a little more activity up there. I don't wanna, it is an association, but yet, it's kind of a public cemetery. I mean, it's, it's a cemetery used by, it is our community cemetery. And, uh, and, and, and with that said, I, I think, I think, um, we need to consider, you know, doing what we can as far as the snow, we wanna continue to do that. It's amazing the traffic that goes through those cemeteries this time of year, especially in December and in January with holidays and things like that. And it is quite a, quite a community service gesture when we do that. They, it's really appreciated by the, by the people who go up and, and visit these graves. So with that said, I just, I kinda wanna stay impartial with this, but yet, um, you know, I, I've, I, I really am on behalf of, you know, the, uh, things that have been done for St. Anne's, I appreciate everything the city's done for us in the past, so.
And I would fully expect that you, uh, reduce yourself on any votes associated with this, that's certainly fine. Councilmember Roger.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Kirby a couple of questions.
Please do.
Since you're on this board, this one of the fifth, uh, cemetery, it's not a holiday work, this association, does it take money in, does it get donations, does it?
Well, there's a, yes, there's a, there's, um, as far as, I can speak towards St. Anne's, and I believe Mount Cemetery set up the same way. It's an association, there's an endowment set up, um, and also, there's a perpetual care fund, and that's, you know, where a lot of the money goes into. There's the sale of graves, um, there's, um, perpetual care fees when there's a surplus and things like this. Yeah, there, there are fees that do come in, yes.
Uh, it did help, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. We need to clearly understand, the request is for the road, roadways, not for, for example, when you get from the road to the grave, that is taken care of, you know, by the people, the association, or the grave digger, whatever you wanna call it. So that's, that's not what's going on. The other is, in my experience, having been a minister in this town, there are a lot of people that visit those graves. They, they go there to, you know, pay their respects, to, to have good memories, um, and it, it doesn't just happen in the full summer when you sit there under a tree and, you know, it's warm out, they, they go all the time. And as Mr. Kirby pointed out, they, they go through that cemetery, so.
And some go through whether there's snow there or not.
Absolutely.
And, and then they, you know, they run into problems.
Yeah, I can't, I, I agree with that, although I haven't personally seen it, but I've talked to people that, that go to visit their relatives or friends, so.
I have a question in regards to how it actually is working now, this, again, I don't know anything about this either. So when we're talking about road access, we're talking about the main entrance and exit of the cemetery, or we're talking about all the way through the cemetery, and any of the branch roads, that's the responsibility of the association?
Well, in the past, we've asked them to plow, they, they plow the whole cemetery, like Calvary Cemetery, for instance, I think, you know, it's an eight-foot road, ten-foot road, I think it's one pass through and one pass down the middle, and they're done. Um, St. Anne's Cemetery out in, um, out by Hubbard, that's, that just has one road in and one road out, that's usually just one swipe in and one out. Now, Mount Cemetery is a quite a bit larger cemetery, and as I said before, that's more of a, a public domain than anything else, and that's, that's, you know, it's a little bit larger, and there's a little more extensive plowing that goes out there. But again, we get six, seven inches of snow like tonight, there's not gonna be any requests to come up and plow it out. There won't be any requests the following day, it may, there may be days, if not weeks, before we ask them to run and take a help.
And to be clear, how it's been done in the past without any policy in place? The cemeteries, I take it, have been like the last things to be plowed after all the streets?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, that's the way it currently is. And City Administrator Kruegel, do you have any idea what time, materials, and equipment cost would, uh, claim two per hour, uh, to do this type of work? Have me outshots to try to figure it out, so.
Um, well, it would be, basically, your, your time would be your salary plus benefits, and your equipment would be, you know, we don't have a, in our fee schedule, a dollar amount for it to still plow, because we still typically charge that out, but it's a, it's an expensive piece of equipment, we're talking two-hundred-and-twenty to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, I mean, you're probably looking at, at a minimum, just bare costs, around a hundred dollars an hour, something like that. I think that's fairly, um, it could be low, but I think it's probably in the ballpark, something like that. Uh, and in some of the cases, like Calvary and St. Anne's, those are really easy, the, the mound is the more difficult one, because it's bigger. Um, you know, and, and the big thing is about managing expectations as well, 'cause we could get, I mean, this winter, we've been lucky if you don't like snow. Uh, but if we get a winter where there's a lot of snow and you, you have storage issues, um, you know, drifting, things like that, I mean, we're gonna be, we're gonna be battling that ourselves, and maybe that's just the situation where we have a conversation and say, "Hey, we, we can't get to it, you're gonna have to find a private person to do it," so, um, yeah, I mean, there, there is a cost to the city, and that's, that's why we have these conversations, just so that everybody's aware.
Okay. Councilmember Sullivan?
Just a quick question on liability, if something gets damaged in the process, if we continue the process of doing the plowing, something gets damaged in the process, who's responsible for that? And then also, are we liable if somebody were to say, slip on ice after we took care of the pro- or did the process of the snow plowing, salty? Uh, I defer to City Attorney, 'cause those are some kind of gray areas.
City Attorney Coriel.
Thank you. Um, before I answer those questions, I'm not sure I'll do tonight, frankly, but, um, I was asked at about ten o'clock last night to look into the legalities of whether the city's authorized to, uh, plow the cemeteries and/or, um, do the tree maintenance or tree trimming during summers, and I've only had an opportunity to spend about sixty minutes on it this morning. Um, it, it, it's not an overly complicated issue, but you do have specific state statutes regarding cemeteries and cemetery associations, and what their responsibilities are towards maintaining their cemeteries. These are not city-owned cemeteries, which would be a different situation. Uh, you also have specific state statutes that authorize the city to plow public streets. Uh, I have yet to come across a statute that authorizes a municipality to, um, plow private property with, uh, any kind of snow plowing, but I haven't had an opportunity to finish the research, frankly. Uh, and the other question that comes into play here is the public purpose expenditure of the city time, uh, that's used to, um, plow those if necessary. There are some laws out there regarding, uh, snow plowing public roads. I know counties and town authorities are authorized to contract with, um, private property owners to plow those, but they're required to be reimbursed for their actual costs incurred as part of doing it. That statute is silent on as to whether cities are authorized to do that. So what I would ask is for the council to indulge me a few weeks while I can look into completing my research before we make a decision that may or may not be, um, appropriate, while giving due respect and consideration to the fact that this has been going on, I'm not trying to, uh, be a, you know, negative Nancy here with regard to the activity that's been going on, but the question was posed, and I would appreciate some time to be able to complete my research on it.
I certainly think that's something we can take care of, City Attorney Coriel, which we've had enough to go ahead and explain what, uh, public expenditure is, and what we as a City Council ought to be mindful of.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Minnesota's, Minnesota Constitution prohibits a municipality from spending public dollars, um, not in furtherance of a public expenditure purpose. There's a number of different ways to say it, but functionally, what you're looking at is whether the expenditure is, one, a public purpose, and, two, whether it's authorized somewhere in the law for that expenditure to be made. Um, so at, at some point, the council has to make a policy decision with those on whether or not the use of public funds is, in fact, uh, being expended for public purpose. In addition to that, there has to be specific authority granted somewhere in the law to the city to do that on top of, uh, public purpose determination. Um, it's not my job to tell you if it is a public purpose or not, I think that's a policy decision that this body makes, the issue is whether or not there's specific statutory or charter or code authority for that expenditure. And what I've done so far is I've, I've been able to email, uh, Jasper a couple of the citations in the City Code that references the responsibilities for, for plowing private property. That's about the extent of what I've, what I've been able to put down in writing. Um, I've talked to an individual or two today that, uh, know a little bit more about the cemetery situation than I do, and have kind of got their input on, uh, those organizations. That's about it, so, um, that's where I'm at.
Any questions for our City Attorney?
I have one question.
Councilmember Sullivan?
What are we currently doing, or what are the cemeteries currently doing this year? At this point, is the city doing it, or are we not doing it? Maybe, I don't.
We haven't had any snow, I don't think, uh, we've had to do anything. Um, I can't think that we've had these situ- that's kind of like, uh, Mr. Colden wanted to address this real soon, he thinks time's running out, but, um, no, I, I don't think we've had the opportunity to ask for any, uh, help with this, so.
City Administrator Kruegel, please.
I think, I think when we had our snowstorm in November, I think we did some work out there, and that's when the question came up. I may be wrong, I think, I, I don't know if we did all of the cemeteries, but I thought we did a little bit of work out in the wild.
Well, I guess that leads up to my next question, what do we do in the meantime? I mean, we're kind of leaving them hanging with this theme, that is, right, this.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think you just do it until I get back to you. I, and I didn't mean to give short shrift of your question about liability, those are extremely important questions in, in dealing with this, and I know when you deal with county contractors or private property owners, those liabilities are all addressed. Um, you know, if, if, if the city plows over a mailbox, it's the city's responsibility to fix the mailbox. It's the same thing, uh, with that, so there definitely needs to be something in, you know, worked out, if that's what we're gonna be doing.
I concur.
But the falling ice thing, that's always a fact question, so.
Well, I think it's inevitable that, uh, a smart, uh, play right here would be to go ahead and, uh, table this, and I'm thinking until the first meeting in February, to give ample time for our City Attorney to do his research, for the cemetery associations to perhaps have some conversations amongst their people, their leadership regarding, uh, what, what they're currently doing and what potentially they, they may have to do as far as they're thinking on how to do this in the future, and perhaps for our City Administrator to have his staff maybe take a look at what, uh, the cost factors are. And I think, uh, we put this back on the agenda on the first meeting in February. So I'll go ahead and make a motion, have we table this until the first meeting in February? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Councilmember Sullivan?
And that's with the understanding we'll continue, that's right, this, up until we come up with a decision.
I, I, I don't think at this point we really have a choice, do we, City Administrator Kruegel?
We'll, we'll continue it.
Yeah.
We have a choice, but, yeah.
Well, I think that we'd be leaving people hanging if we just didn't do anything. So we have a motion, we have a second, is there any additional discussion? There are none at all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, next line item on the docket is a Delta, which is the capital lease item approval, approval request, approval request.
Mayor Hage, members of City Council, I, I kind of keyed this up on the second at an organizational meeting, just to talk about the process of this, 'cause this is something that you'll see through over here. Um, we did post, um, on our bulletin board, a list of what all of the items in the lease are, why they're being replaced, and contact information on, if you want more information, you can get that information. Uh, moving forward, I, I put this one on regular agenda, moving forward, we might, you might see something like SCADA update or upgrade again, because that's an ongoing one. Um, on the lease, I think it's something like fifty-nine thousand dollars, but as these invoices come in for these services, we wanna make sure they get paid in a timely fashion. Um, so you might see these on consent agenda, and I will, I'll, I'll play it by ear how council wants to, wants to do it, but, um, the items that we have up here, uh, are for But, um, the items that we have up here, uh, are for approval are a ditch witch, SK fifteen fifty mini skid. This is for the electric division and what this will do is allow us to work in smaller confined areas. Um, you know, kind of completing some of the, the main projects that we have for that, it's just, it's, it makes us more versatile. Um, we have a John Deere fifteen eighty-five tractor and this tractor has a broom on it. Um, it's for the streets and parks department or division and that replaces two pieces of equipment. Now, these pieces of equipment that get replaced with this newer equipment, you'll likely see a surplus materials item in the future for this. Um, but a lot of them have been gotten to the point where they're, they're not really worth much. Um, most of them, the reason why they're on here is because it's, it costs way more to, to replace and get them back running, um, than to, uh, replace them, so. And then the last one on this request is the SCADA upgrade. Uh, this is for the water wastewater division and basically this allows us to monitor all of the systems at our wastewater plant and our water plant, uh, our water towers, this will tie everything together under one umbrella. Uh, when our wastewater plant was built, it, it didn't necessarily have the most sophisticated SCADA system. Um, there's certain things that we're doing right now that we're manually reading, uh, certain levels and items at our plant that we could tie into a SCADA system and all that information's captured in real time and stored and we can always go back to it. Um, where there's certain things that we're looking at where we're taking one reading per day. Um, that doesn't really, uh, help us out too much. I have a request to explain SCADA, and I'm not the expert on this, but, um, Rich Kuchera, he, so I'm trying to remember what the acronym stands for. Um, let me try, oh, supervisory, control and data acquisition is the, is the acronym for that. And basically all it is, is it's a way that there's an interface between, let's say, a pump and a computer. And then the computer captures all the, the data when the pump's running, how much energy it's using, uh, at what rate is it running, um, things like that. And there's all kinds of these little, little pumps and motors all around our plants that we need to know what's going on with them. Um, and if we have tied into a SCADA, we can set up alarms, so if something fails, we know immediately. Um, whereas we might not know until something happens. So, it's, it's better practices as far as maintenance and safety and, and things like that go. Um, to me, i- i- it's something that, it would, when we build the plant, it should have all been state-of-the-art. The technology hasn't changed for years. Um, it's, it's all very similar, uh, but what we're doing right now is, uh, kind of getting it up to, up to speed, so. Yeah, yeah, basically we are retrofitting, so it's, it's a major, major need, um, and it'll help us out with operations immensely.
Would it be fair to, if I can correct, would it be fair to say that a SCADA system is a, a way for our operators to go and keep track of our plant remotely?
Uh, it is, and we have that capability right now for our major components. Um, so like a lot of our major components are tied into the SCADA system. Now, we don't have this software called Historian, we're getting into the details, but Historian keeps all the data forever. Uh, so we can go back if, once we have it running, ten years, we can see what the average pump grade was on this pump, you know, in August. We can compare all this data. So, we don't have that capability right now, um, we will have more remote capabilities with more different sensors, so it will be good. But we, we do have the capabilities right now to get alerts for our major pieces of equipment. Uh, this will tie those in, those, this will, this project will be replacing the SCADA on them as well, or the sensors on those and tying it into the new software.
I have a question.
Councilmember Rollman.
With SCADA, how does MerpPuck fit in in terms of why are we paying for it and they're not?
That's a great question, um, they, they probably should. It, it's tough because the, the plant itself was purchased by the city of La Sure, but we have given the rights to it over to MerpPuck, um, they own it, they technically own, own and operate it. We could go to MerpPuck and request reimbursement for that. Um, we've, we've tried that on a couple of items recently that, that haven't passed. Uh, it's something that we essentially need to do, it's similar to the land purchase, if you've been keeping up with, with MerpPuck happenings. Um, the city of La Sure, it was approved to purchase some land, we went to MerpPuck to get it reimbursed. Um, it's in their capital improvement plan, um, it was tabled until this, this coming meeting. Um, so, it's something that needs to happen long-term, uh, we could re- request reimbursement for this. I don't know if it would be approved or not, but it's something that needs to happen with the plant. It also needs to happen with our water plant and there's a lot of software costs that are not necessarily redundant, but it, once you buy a license for it, you can utilize it, uh, for our wastewater. So, you know, we, we would be recommending to do this for our water system, but we're gonna tie some of the wastewater stuff into it as well. So it's a complicated answer, um, we could, we, I think we have every right to request reimbursement for this. Um, I don't know if, I mean, I, I'll take direction if you want me to, I can try, I don't know if it would get approved.
Could we also not defer it until we perhaps own the plant? I'm not crazy about putting things off, but we could simply say we're gonna wait to do this until we dissolve the joint powers and move forward and we own it.
Yeah, you know, I would probably recommend against that just because the SCADA, SCADA installers are very hard to get to go come do work for you. So once they're here, they want to do as much as they can and to tie it in after the fact might cost a lot more money. So, you know, I'll, I'll, I will take direction, uh, but I would recommend against it at this time. Um, we could, we could, but I would, i- if anything, I would say, you know, recommend that I request for reimbursement for a portion of this from MerpPuck and see if that happens.
Is the other possibility, I'm trying to get my, get this framed right. If, if we turn the, if the plant becomes La Sure's solely, we're gonna be talking about assets and the cost and, and buying out, so to speak, Henderson. Could we somehow try to get this accepted so that it's clear this belongs to us and it's not an asset of MerpPuck?
We could, it might actually be clearer if it just stays out of that whole discussion. But, and in the grand scheme of things, on a fifty, let's say a fifty thousand dollar project, if we would consider it an asset of MerpPuck and split it up based on that asset, based on revenues, um, you know, the city of La Sure is still covering ninety-five percent of that cost anyway. So, you know, it'd be a lot of paperwork and discussion and it, the outcome would be very similar to what, what's in front of you.
Mark.
Councilmember.
I'll give you direction Jasper, we'll bring it to the MerpPuck board in the next meeting and ask for reimbursement, see where the vote goes. That's my direction for you.
For the SCADA. Okay, council member Sullivan.
Jasper, can you speak to, has this been brought out back from MerpPuck at all?
SCADA, there have been some repairs that have been done.
Have you talked about the upgrades at all, because I think that was a hangup with the property, correct?
Kind of, yeah, that was what the claim was, um, but it, it was discussed. Um, but yeah, I mean, to me, most of this cost that you see is all software-related. Um, so either way, we'd be purchasing it, so you could make the argument, well, we're gonna, we'd purchase it anyway for our water system. Um, we're just going to, it doesn't make sense to have two different SCADA systems.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement, I was just trying to figure out if we had had that conversation to the team, like that was the focus of the property sale.
And because we are using this both from MerpPuck as well as our water treatment facility, we'd be able to determine how much, what the percentages of each of those entities, if, if we needed to come up with that math as well.
It, we would, yeah, it, it wouldn't necessarily, this is more for, like, we're talking, I think you're talking more of flow going into the plant, which we have good mechanisms right now and that's one of the major things that are tying into our current SCADA. So we, we're getting those measurements, so we know those numbers. This is more for, and operations and maintenance enhancement.
I, I would think that, maybe the term is psychologically, if, if we, if we buy this and then say, hey, come on, help reimburse us, we haven't partnered with them, that's one of the concerns, I saw, I thought I heard councilman Sullivan thinking that. Whereas if we went to them in their next meeting and said, we're thinking of doing this, would you consider joining us? That there, there's a different approach here. Frankly, I don't think you're gonna get anywhere with it with the board. I can see a three-three vote coming down the line if they can even meet, but there's something there that we're, we're sort of saying, here's what we did, now you help pay us.
Well, if, if I may, part of the deal is, uh, MerpPuck passed a, a budget that's already in deficit spending. This is something that isn't budgeted for as well, so that would push them even more into deficit spending as well. I, I, that's the major, from my, from my opinion, that's the major opinion as far as the land purchase goes, well, we're already deficit spending, this would be probably the first thing that we would cut, is the land purchase. Which, from my standpoint, it's probably one of the most expen- or most important things that the plant or wastewater facility needs to purchase because we're landlocked. Um, so, I, we could have that conversation, they didn't plan for this in their budget. Um, if they would have, they'd be even more in deficit spending. So, um, I think we're right around two hundred and some thousand dollars, this would push us to, this is a sixty thousand dollar project, so whatever the split would be.
Can, can we simply make it clear if we do this that we own it and we're gonna let them use it? Just, that's it, we own it, we're gonna let you use it, MerpPuck, but it's ours. That seems to me to be the clear way to do it.
I agree, and I think that, you know, the paper trail of the money for this is easy to follow. Some of the other stuff that's happened there is difficult to track. I mean, this is, it's almost easier, in my opinion, if it's just the city buys it, then we know that we own it. Um, as opposed to it goes to MerpPuck, MerpPuck pays for it, well then there's a debate about, you know, what percentage of it is owned based on some numbers that people can't agree on. So, and it maybe isn't the best approach, but it, I think long-term it'll be more clear as far as this split goes, it'll be a hundred percent La Sure.
What I'm saying is, we would, we would purchase it, lease it, whatever it's called, I guess we're purchasing through a lease, so we'd purchase it this way. It's ours, but we would then offer it to MerpPuck, not impose it, but offer it. That makes sure it's ours. Okay, I'm not sure I'm clear there, but I, I'm a little bit nervous about making this and then it becomes an asset of MerpPuck and then we try to dissolve MerpPuck and we're in all kinds, like you said, we can't figure out how much of what belongs to whom.
And I, if I may, I think I could work Smith that item at the next MerpPuck meeting to say, city of La Sure is going through this upgrade and their SCADA system, they're gonna tie it in to the, the, uh, MerpPuck or the wastewater treatment plant. We're not asking for any reimbursement, but we just want to make it clear that this asset, which is mostly software, is all of the city of La Sure's.
And that they consent to use it.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything?
I just want to clarify one, just, just for the record, I was not implying that the land sale wasn't talked about at the, at the meeting, but, just to clarify.
Well, I want to clarify this, that remember, we've already budgeted all these items, this is just the courtesy of staff going ahead and giving us the opportunity to look at these things too as they come payable, so that's what we're really looking at tonight.
And, and the major intent is to be able to have a, another paper trail showing what we're purchasing so that the public knows. Um, because the funding mechanism for this is non-traditional, uh, because it won't be, traditionally you'll see it in your disbursements, um, any purchases. This won't be until we make our first payment in, uh, well, December, middle of December of twenty nineteen, we'll make our first payment. You'll see a large lump sum go out, but you won't have an individualized, itemized, uh, list of things that are done. So, this is just to make sure that this gets out into the public eye and we have a public record of what we're purchasing, why we're purchasing it and how much.
Okay, so what we're looking at then gentlemen is the motion to approve the payment request forms and authorizing staff to submit for the payment.
I'd like to make that motion, but add to it that the SCADA upgrade would be owned by La Sure and offered to MerpPuck for its use.
Excellent.
So we have a motion and a second, uh, to go ahead and approve the payment request forms and authorizing staff to submit the payment with the sole expression that La Sure owns the equipment and will go ahead and, in essence, uh, charge it out to Henderson as a, as a, as needed, is that correct?
Offering to them for use at no cost or use, and it's, it's only SCADA that we're talking about.
Right, just SCADA. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second and additional discussion. Okay, none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to line item and echo, which is city administrator's evaluation of public summary.
Mayor Haig, members of city council, uh, this is following state statute, uh, following a closed meeting. So, I have this up here, uh, you can choose to read it, I don't know, Todd, if they technically need to read it out loud or if it's in a packet.
Supposed to read it.
So if somebody needs to read this and then, um, yeah, that's it.
I'm gonna go ahead and let our city attorney go ahead and read it, since I'm gonna have to go in there and my voice is just shot.
Okay. What's that?
You got bigger print than we do.
Actually smaller. Uh, the city administrator performance evaluation occurred at a closed meeting on December tenth, two thousand eighteen. What follows is a summary of that closed council meeting. Council discussed compilation of performance evaluations provided by the individual council members. The evaluation is broken down into the following eight categories, each of which included multiple subcategories in the evaluation criteria of whether the city administrator's performance meets expectations or needs improvement. Overall leadership and management of the city, professionalism, focus on effective planning, recruitment, training and supervision of personnel, development and implementation of policies, development and monitoring of budget, facilitation of council relations, public engagement and interagency cooperation. Compilation of the written performance evaluations completed by the personnel and budget committee was discussed. Of the fifty-two subcategories, the city administrator's performance met expectations for forty-four of those subcategories and eight indicated his performance needs improvement. The general consensus of the coun- council is that Jasper has demonstrated effective leadership and management of the city's budgeting, public works and encouraging teamwork and innovation. Some within the council feels the city administrator has room for growth and economic development and housing and in communicating properly with the city council members and he needs to improve with delegating responsibility. City administrator provides some feedback to the evaluations indicating that he will continue to try to improve in all areas of his job.
Well done, thank you. City administrator approval.
I think that's it, uh, there's no formal action required, um, it's just, we'll be reading a summary of the closed meeting and, and that's it.
Okay, with that said, we will now go around and roll, and we'll start with council member Sullivan.
Well, I don't, we had a transit meeting, was that last week, or?
Yep.
Um, things seem to be going well with the trains at, in the lead market, I think he has a little bit of an update. Um, I've got, looking forward to my first EDA meeting tomorrow night. Um, it'll be here six to eight. Um, and we have mediation from MerpPuck on the thirtieth, so we'll be up in the city's for though, and I would imagine the majority of the day. Um, and come back for a MerpPuck meeting on Thursday, following Thursday, the thirtieth and thirty-first.
Busy schedule.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Rollman.
I really don't have anything with one exception, um, earlier it was mentioned about the airport commission. But we do need public members for the airport commission and applications would be appreciated. Uh, I'll say this publicly, we need people who have vested interest in the airport by being out there flying airplanes, but we need other citizens also. We've tended in the past to have all people who had some, how can I put it? They were benefiting from the airport, which is okay, but we need the general public also, so.
Thank you very much. Councilmember.
Couple of things, uh, HRA, I had my meeting, but as my executive director spoke earlier at this meeting, it should do me all of the stuff I was gonna talk about, so should have a fine job there. Uh, transit meeting, I was gonna add there on my own end is that I was elected the chairman of the MRVT.
Congratulations.
So I'll be the chairman of that group. Um, I don't think I have anything else to report.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Rolloff.
I don't have anything at this time, but I will at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kirby.
I'd just like to close with, uh, echoing with councilman Sullivan, I have to meet with you tomorrow night with a, my first EDA meeting also. And, uh, kind of looking forward to meeting with all of you this weekend with the retreat, so we'll see where that takes us, thank you.
And what I have is, again, uh, the retreat, nine o'clock to four o'clock up there at the fire station on Saturday. Uh, take the oppo- we'll, we'll have the agenda out, I'm guessing, with the next couple of days, uh, regarding the, everything that we're gonna be discussing on the retreat. If anybody has any questions or concerns about anything on the agenda, please send me an email with that so I can get Jasper to have a, some preparation time ahead of time before the retreat. And when it comes to city council meetings, the same thing, the day of the city council. The day of the city council meetings, please send me an email, even if you have nothing to offer at eight AM that day, so I could put together a compiled email to Jasper to go ahead and speed up our process for our meetings. With that said, city attorney Corial, do you have anything?
I will not be at the retreat this weekend. I've had a family vacation planned for a while, so if anybody wants to go over anything with me individually or as a group, please just let me know. I could certainly be there when we get back.
And I want to thank you sir for taking the effort to go ahead and take a look at this cemetery situation for the city of Lassure and look forward to getting back at the meeting, first meeting in February with some information on that so we can move forward. How about our city clerk? Anything Stacy?
No.
City administrator.
A few things, I'll give an update on our, we're kind of in the middle of hiring. We posted the position for recreation manager and the position for finance director. We have five interviews tomorrow for rec manager and then on Wednesday we have three interviews, so we're hoping by Friday we'll be able to figure out what the, the next steps are. Finance director, both of them will likely have at least one more interview step in there, so we'll keep you updated on that. We do have an EDA meeting tomorrow, it starts at six o'clock. The major item that will be discussed is a purchase agreement for the land up on top of the hill across one sixty-nine. The EDA loan, or EDA owns, they're going to be looking at that, that purchase agreement and choosing to either accept it or not. So that's exciting for the city. We do have some updates, we're working internally, we're really working on some of the items related to the comprehensive plan, the major one is opening up a main street. We're still working with, with MINDON on that. We have received as much of a verbal confirmation that they will allow us to open that up as we can right now. So we, we've received verbal, we're working on making sure that we can document that somehow, some way, either through what's called an ICE and intersection control evaluation report that they'll give us or just a formal memo. Right now we just have verbal confirmation and emails. We want to really make sure that, you know, they're serious because this is a big deal for the community and we don't want to start investing dollars into looking at some of the planning aspects of it and then all of a sudden saying, yeah, oh, we need to look at this again. So we want to make sure that it's finalized. So that's something that's very exciting. We'll talk a little bit more about this at the retreat. And kind of the next steps moving forward, there will be a lot of discussion about this and at the council level and there's a lot of moving parts, so we're, we're working on it internally to try to find the best plan and the best course of action to move forward. But yeah, retreat, the agenda should go out tomorrow. It is a busy day with, with interviews, but I, I think it should go out. You will receive a lot of information at the retreat. The major component of the morning session is just kind of a discussion between some of the various boards and commissions and the city council. And this, don't, don't expect it to be a major goal setting session, it's just to make sure that the two groups, council and the boards and commissions feel comfortable talking with each other. There are a lot of new faces on there. Not everybody can attend, I'm guessing, from the boards and commissions, but it'll be good just to make that contact point between the boards and commissions and the city council. As applications come in, the planning commission will be more active and they'll be working with city council. And I think we got a really good group. Ryan Scher is the new chair for the planning commission, he was appointed the other night. Samantha DiMaggio and myself had a meeting with him today, just, you know, he's really excited and I think he'll do a great job. So, yeah, a lot of stuff going on, we're, we're getting organized and, and yeah, we have the retreat on, on Saturday and anybody from the public's interested in showing up and, and learning about it, I've already heard a couple people might actually come to this one, the last, I think, two that I've been to, they haven't had anybody from the public. So usually the paper shows up, so, you know, there'll be some refreshments and some snacks and, you know, maybe some food for lunch if, if there's any leftover. But the public is more than welcome to, to be there and it, it'll be a lot of good information out there and really kick off our year.
Question for you real quick, the rec manager, you said there was five interviews tomorrow, three on Wednesday. Do we have any, when's the deadline for the finance director position? Like we established a deadline for that?
Yeah, so the rec manager position, the, the, both of the positions are closed. So the rec manager, we have five interviews on Tuesday and then the finance director, we have three on Wednesday. Yep.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, anybody else have anything? Counsel member Sullivan.
I actually just have one more question specifically for Jasper. How are the new rates of the community center going?
Yeah, as you may have noticed, there's been some flurry of activity on social media and we posted some stuff just to clarify some items. I think after, and I kind of stated this at the last meeting, once you've talked to somebody and explained what, what's going on, it makes a lot of sense. I think what happens is some people see like we have a month-to-month membership where you don't have to sign any sort of contract. Well, that's the most expensive option per month that you can do. But if you compare it to, well, you sign an annual contract, then it's very comparable to what you were paying last year. And the major goal internally is we want to drive memberships, we want people to sign up for the memberships. We don't want, some people have been buying like punch cards and basically we've made it so that it's more attractive to become a member than to continue to buy punch cards. So once you kind of crunch the numbers with a lot of these individuals and say, well, wait a minute, my punch cards are going to go way up. Well, you look at the option for a, like a single membership is twenty-one dollars a month. You know, you look at that, that's, you know, less than a punch card. So if you go ten times a month, you're going to, you're going to be money ahead. So, you know, our staff is doing a good job of, of making sure that people understand the rates when they come in. The good thing about the way the rate structure is set up is that they don't all happen at the beginning of the year, so. And most of them actually occur in December. That's where we have our, that's where we have our membership drive. So most of our, our, our memberships expire in December. So we have a few in January, a few in February, so we're kind of rolling them out. The major one is the ECHs, the ones that are on the monthly reoccurring. And if you're on that, you should receive a letter here, I believe this week, kind of letting you know the process and your options for that. So, you know, we've gotten a little bit of, of hesitancy and pushback, but once it seems like we've talked through the individuals and they understand what's going on, it's, they seem to be generally happy with more options. Thank you.
Do we have a time frame in regards to when utility bills are going to be updated for reflecting the new rates?
Yeah, so you should see your first, so let me think about this. The meters were read on, it's around Christmas, you'll get your December bill for January. You probably won't see your January rates until February.
Okay, anybody else? Now go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried.